Excellent, okay. Okay, I'm gonna walk you through this afternoon with understanding learn the technology as a program. And then we're gonna look through some of the children's work from last year's. And then we're gonna talk about how parents can help to encourage and support us in this particular program. And last of all, in the Q and A session. Before I carry on, do take note that this particular session is being recorded. And if you have any other questions to be posed in the, to be posted in the Q and A chats. Okay, thank you. Okay, what is learned with technology here? Okay, so it is actually a meaningful incorporation of technology in teaching and learning. Okay, we help, we hope to build self-directed and passionate lifelong learners. By encouraging your child to do their own independent research. We would like to extend the learning beyond the daily classroom teaching. And we would like to actually take the opportunity to give your child time and space for further self-inquiry and develop greater awareness of their thinking processes and give them the chance to build logical thinking. Okay, there are some important cross-disciplinary skills that runs across the different subjects. And LWT is very good to bring up some of these cross-disciplinary skills. For instance, when it comes to thinking, we are hoping that your child could actually take the opportunity to learn to analyze data, interpret information, and then at the same time, apply their knowledge and information into problem solving. Okay, when it comes to social aspect, we hope that your child could also cooperate and learn to collaborate with others, accept the responsibility. And the good thing about LWT is at certain portions of the work, your child actually gets to collaborate with other people and they do different roles in the team. So it calls for flexibility and role adaptation as well. Okay, when it comes to communication, we are hoping their child learns to listen to instructions, speak, read and write, a very important thing. This will all go into the presentation skills later on for the project work, especially at the higher level of education. Time management is an important criteria for LWT. Your child needs to learn to manage the time, make the informed choices, make their own decisions about which particular task I can handle, which aspect I can carry on, what aspect I need to actually ask my peers for support and help. And last of all, research work. We would like the child to actually take the chance to really do their own research, plan up, observe data, collect information, analyze the data. Okay, so why are we doing LWT in Amorti Primary School? I think parents, you know that in this digital era, the students must be equipped with the necessary information and tech know-hows and dispositions to strive in this rapid-changing world. Okay, because this is actually a very seamless world where things could change and we are all interconnected and is a very diverse, changing world at the same time. Okay. With this two years of COVID situation, I think your child will have more opportunities to do the online learning as well. So it is actually good for us to actually take the opportunity to roll out more of this tech-supported or tech-integrated learning. Now, at the same time, in secondary school and higher education institutions, students have been learning through a mix of home-based and in-school activities. This was actually published in the MOE's news article that by the end of 2020, the schools should try to adopt this blended learning module in secondary school and higher education. By 2022, they should actually implement the blended learning in their schools as well. So this particular blended learning form actually leveraged both online and offline approaches to learning. So at the same time, MOE pilot program for blended learning, they actually do with five different primary schools. In Amorti Primary School, we would like to jumpstart and prepare our children for this blended learning experiences ahead to prepare them for their secondary schools, to prepare them for this ever-changing digital era. Okay, and the most important thing is LWT actually provides our children with the chance to really learn at their own pace. There is actually time and space put aside to allow them to pursue their own interests and to learn beyond the curriculum. Okay, so these are the proposed LWT days. The first assignments will start next week in the March holiday. The, the child, actually, your child could use the entire week's holiday to slowly plan out their schedule to get the tasks done. There is no hurry for your child to finish everything within a day. We plan out the tasks for your child about four to five days. Sorry, four to five hours worth of work. And therefore, you could spread out the four to five hours across the different days to get the task done. The second assignment is in June holiday. And the third assignment is during the PSI oral days. And the last one is during the PSI LC day. For the primary one and primary two parents, do note that your child will only officially start LWT in term two. Instead, during this March holiday, they will be given homework assignments. Okay, I think this part is more interesting for some of the parents. You get to see a samples of the children's book from last year. This is P4 English LWT on reading and intonation. You'll see that the child actually does his own recording here. So I'll play the recording just for a while for you to take, take note of what the child is saying first.
It was the first day of school. Mrs. Stan, a former teacher of class four, he spoke to pupils about the responsibilities they could decide to take on. All of you can contribute to make our class agree on, Mr. Stan said confidently. It was the first day.
Okay, at this point, I'll stop here first. Okay, so what really you are hearing is the child's own voice. Now, the beauty about doing a recording is the child can actually record, replay, listen, and then study his own intonation, listen to his tone, listen to his speech. Okay, if he's not happy with the product, he can always delete the audio recording and then re-record again. So this allows the child to really improve on the RSE. Usually for the English LWT, the first two assignments, the focus is normally on oral skills. This is to help build up your child for the oral exam and to actually give the child a chance to also do some peer assessment. I listened to my friend and I'm gonna hear how my friend reads. Okay, then I learned to improve on my own reading. What are the dos and the don'ts when I'm doing a reading piece? So this is actually one of the assignments that your child will be doing at a primary four level, even for P1, P2 and P3 later on. Okay. Okay, this is another piece of LWT for language on communication. The children are required to watch a video clip on communication to, in the context of audience, the different target audience, the context and the purpose. So the child will have to observe the video clips. What, what did they see? What are the different learning points? They have to apply what they have learnt in lessons about, okay, targeted audience, the context of the communication and the purpose of it. So after that, they will have to do feedback. So you can see Brendan's feedback about the difference between speech and writing, how it differs in terms of the vocabulary being used. He goes on and on because he's actually, he has a very strong love for language. So in this case, it gives him the chance and the freedom to really express himself and to really share his thoughts after watching the video clip. Gerard is a little bit more reserved in terms of his comments, but he did make the observation that the video clips itself, he has, he gets to learn how to speak, how to automate his vocabulary, what are the things to do to increase fluency? Of course, he has the follow-up feedback on that, what he can do to gain confidence and how he can choose the right tools in terms of communication. Okay, this is a mathematics task on, by a primary two child. This is actually about using what they have learnt in class on doing tally. So they put a tick to represent one person. So the P2 level, when they learn about graph, this is the first idea they actually come across tally. This is also brought up in primary one syllabus as well. Okay, so the child will plot a graph. Okay, I have several people getting, I have seven times my dice rolls to one. And then I have twelve times my dice keeps rolling to twelve. And then from there, with the tally, the child plots the, or draw out the bar graph. Okay, now, the most important thing about this task is the child needs to also analyze and interpret the information from the bar graph. So the child will actually make the observation that my dice keeps rolling to twelve, keeps rolling to two. There are two, there are more twos than fives. Okay, so because of the observation that the bar graph for two is actually the longest, it has twelve tallies there. So for a piece of work like this, this is children's book. And this is what we would like to see, the thinking of the children in terms of mathematics, reasoning, what they have learnt in class, how do they apply on the piece of work? And how they actually use that knowledge in terms of analyzing information. Okay, this is a P3 piece of work on comparing fractions. So just a snippet of the video clip.
I'm gonna take one of this and one of this. I am going to put this thing right over here. And then I am going to draw a line. I'm going to cut out this thing. Now, I am going to take this thing.
Okay, at this point, for this particular task, the child is given two fractions to compare. Now, the child is falling back on what he has learnt in class because in class, he's very used to using the fractional disc to compare fractions. So at home, and he doesn't have the fractional disc, he actually uses the paper to actually draw his own fractional disc. And by putting the two pieces overlapping each other, he actually comes to the conclusion that one fraction is actually a bigger portion than the other fraction. Okay, so again, this is what the LWT task allows the child to do, to explore the different ways to compare fractions, allow the child to actually have the space and time to think about how can I actually bring these two fractions together? How do I do the comparison? What is the best way to show my T-shirt that I have one fraction that's larger than the other? Without going through the idea of equivalent fraction. First, I'm gonna take one of this. Okay, this is a P6 task. Of course, being P6 task, we will expect the task to require a little bit more cognitive maturity. And it is actually higher in demands in terms of cognitive demands on a child. Okay, so the purpose of the task is the child needs to use the tools or items or things around them to help them make closer estimates to the actual value. So they have to pick a tree near the house, the school, and then explain clearly what they would be doing to estimate the height of the tree. So of course, it would be good if the child could take a picture of the tree with the item or the tool. So we can actually see the proportion of the item versus the tree. And then we can compare the how many times more. But, but this child did was, he actually did a drawing, which is good. Okay, so you can see actually from his response, he say that the tree outside my HDB flat is about two and a half times wide. Because the level in my HDB flat is about four meters in height. Now, if we do find out from the HDB website, the standard level one from the ground level to the ceiling is about 3.6 meters with about 20 cm in terms of space from the ground level and the next level. So the child is actually quite knowledgeable because he actually went to find the information from the HDB website. He came to the conclusion that level one is about four meters. Of course, he also make the assumption that level two subsequently, it will also be four meters. And therefore, the three is about two and a half times the, the, the height in terms of the height of the HDB flat. Okay, so, but if you look at this particular assignment, it gives the child the allowance to actually go and find out more about architecture, the height of the building, make estimation in terms of how, how long or how tall is one meters in terms of how am I gonna do the estimate of that tree in relationship to the levels in my HDB flat? So it's a lot of analysis of information, it's a lot of relationship in terms of the variables that he's looking at. Okay, this is another P6 task on financial awareness, where the students actually make use of technology and research tools to guide them in their solutions. What do they have to do? It's a very simple task where they actually have to plan a birthday party, a party meal for 10 people. They get to spend about $20 on the meal. However, there are some compulsory items they have to buy, like two bottles of soft drinks, packets of sausages, packs of chips, marshmallows. These are actually children's food. To make it more interesting for the children, we include one other type of favorite food. So it could be additional potato chips, additional whatever that they liked. Okay, but the point is they have to actually source up the prices from the online grocery website. They have to show us the different ways of buying the items. So in that case, they need to actually really be a smart shopper because they have to go and look for bargains, good bargains, like buy two for the price of one or you get 10% discount. So this is actually a task where it actually allows the child to look at and apply the understanding of percentage, understanding of discount and awareness of how this whole idea of percentage and discount is going to be related to the real-life experiences. In this task, you also need to factor in delivery cost. So the students need to be aware that in real life, it is not just discount, it is not just GST. It is not just buying of food, but I need to factor in other costs, which is delivery cost. Okay, so these are some of the samples of mathematics and language LWT that your children will be looking at. But you can see from all this that they have various forms of presentation through video clips, through audio, through drawings, through writings. So the next one is actually a science, a science LWT on met nets. A very simple activity where the children learn to create their own toys or games using met nets. Yeah, I'm gonna show you this. There's no sound, it's just a video clip. So the parents might be asking then, okay, so if we are looking at very simple task, can my child do online research? Can my child be duplicating other activities that is published online, et cetera? The answer is yes, we are not looking for professors' kind of research. We are not looking for very highbrow university dissertation. We are looking for children's book. If your child actually has certain ideas and your child finds that, hey, actually, some, some of these toys or some of these games online that they like, and they are able to modify the games and the toys that they are making or modify the ideas to create their own idea. That is already very good piece of work from the children's perspective because that is applying of their learning and applying their knowledge. Oops. Next one. Okay, this is a science investigative task on making an egg float in the water. The child submitted this as a whole video clip showing the processes whereby he got this idea from the internet about how to make an egg float by adding salt in the water. So he tried out with one tablespoon of salt and then followed by two tablespoons of salt and three tablespoons of salt. You realize that from the picture, actually, one egg consistently remains at the bottom of the glass of water. Because the child also learns in science that you need to keep a control. That means there must be something where he could refer to as the basic, as the basis of the experiment. So he also learns about variable change. That's the reason why he's changing in terms of the amount of salt he put into the water. Okay, so these are some of the application work that the children learn and they can put into LWT. This is another research project, mini one by another P4 students last year. Having birthday cakes and birthday parties is very common phenomenon among us in daily lives. And the child is very interested. If I'm gonna burn the candle, does it mean that the color of the candle will affect how fast it melts? So this, this, this child is taking the chance that, oh, I'm gonna have this time, I'm going to explore this. So the child actually did a mini experiment, finding out which particular colored candles melt faster. All right, so the child actually could answer questions up to their own interest. They could have the opportunity to find out what they really want to know most. And this is actually really going beyond the curriculum and going beyond the syllabus in terms of the learning. This is a sample of a P6 task for science. They actually play a simple game, is an online game on energy skate park. It's actually a roller coaster game. So the child has to design their own roller coaster. At certain point in the game, the child will discover that, hey, actually, my roller coaster doesn't work. Why? Because the slope is not steep enough. Because I do not have enough energy to actually get the coaster to work. So what are some of the things I have to consider when I'm gonna build the roller coaster then? Okay, and of course, you look at the next flight, it tells you that sometimes the children do run into problem when it comes to whether it's a tech issue or whether they are not very sure about how to proceed with the next step of the work. But they always have peer support online. They can actually ask their friends, okay, can anyone tell me how to do this table chart? Or can anyone tell me, okay, how am I going to proceed to the next step? Because I'm not very sure about this particular idea or that idea. Okay, so we are giving the child the chance to actually collaborate online as well. So this is an important life skill that your child needs to learn, that is collaborative work and cooperating with one another. Okay, for the P1, P2 parents, do not, not to worry. We actually teach your children how to log into a student learning space. So they learn to do that in class. And they also learn to take photos and upload onto SLS using iPhones. They also learn to do voice recording and upload their own voice recording. So all this technological skills, we are preparing your child for the LWT as well as for their future. Okay, for us, for the aesthetics, we also allow the children to actually create their own digital artwork on the iPad. The good thing about having iPad is they could erase, redraw, recolor, and they don't have to worry about making mistakes. They don't have to worry about rubbing through and then erasing and then I get a hole in my drawing paper. So everything is done digitally. Okay, partnership with parents. Let me see, toggle this, I'm gonna show you the task sheets. Yeah, I might need to stop share for a minute. I need to toggle this share screen. Okay. No. Okay, where's the task? Give it a minute. Sorry. It disappeared. It disappeared. Hey, yes, yeah. Okay, back, it came back, okay, good. Here now, I have to share back. Sorry. Okay, does it work now? Yes. Okay, good. Okay, good. So this is the task sheets that we will be uploading onto the school website. We did a summary of the various subjects. And what are the main focus that your child will be looking at? For instance, when it comes to science for the P3, they are looking at diversity of plants, diversity of animals, plant system, and then they need to complete the learning journey booklet, et cetera. Okay, the Chinese test, the Chinese test for, let me see, P3, they are looking at, students will know that there's quite space in picture books for readers, to ignite readers' imagination. So they have to actually identify the white space. And then they have to actually write the characters' mental activities. This, and then talk about how is it going to affect the characterization of the character as well. So the language pieces of work are actually more to do with the creativity and the understanding of characterization. Okay. Okay, let me see if I could toggle to go back. I have to toggle to go back. Okay. This one, yes. Okay, so all these task sheets will be uploaded onto the school website after the briefing. I know in the letter, we actually make known that we will actually issue your child with a hot copy of the task sheets. But we felt that since it is a LWT task, we would also like to make sure that it is convenient. And we are gonna use the digital platform to share out this set of information to your child as well as to you. So it will make convenient for everyone to refer to the task sheets during the March holiday. Okay, when it comes to partnership with parents, we are hoping that you could actually help us to encourage your children. Because this being the first time that they are doing LWT this year, some of the children may find that it is a bit more challenging. There will still be challenges because some of the tasks are meant to be a little bit more unusual, a little bit more open-ended to give your child the space and the chance to explore their interest. So if your child is always looking for one fixed set of answer or one fixed set of solution and say, okay, I really need to go down to the same formula, then I think your child may be a little bit more disappointed because we are hoping that your child could be a little bit more creative in their solution, in the way they express themselves. So when they do face problems in LWT, do encourage them. Tell them that it is okay, it's the learning processes. We just want to see their reasoning. We want to see how they actually apply whatever they have learnt from their lessons. We want them to take ownership of their own learning. We talk about grit and we want the children to actually persevere, be resilient and to really learn from the whole task. So it's the processes that's important, not so much the end product or not so much the final solution. Of course, this piece of work being done during the holiday means that we would like the parents to also have a set brown rules on the use and the purpose of learning devices. Do set aside certain time within the day for your child to be engaged doing this pieces of work. Like I said, we have structured it in such that we have actually about four to five hours worth of work spread within five to seven days. So your child should be spending at most about only an hour on LWT per day. On average, some children may need a little bit more time because they are interested to explore a little bit more. Then allow your child that freedom and that little bit more time to explore further than, okay? Do have conversations with children, show the interest on your children to see, oh, what, what, what exactly are you doing for mathematics? What do you plan to do for your science work? Okay, if they say, okay, I have this idea, but I may need a little bit of help to say, cut the circle because I'm not very good with my psychomotor skills. If time permits, do, do support them, do help them to cut the circles because these are psychomotor skills that some of the younger children may lack. But they had the good idea, so help to support their good ideas. It is their ideas, they just need a little bit of help from you to say, bring me to the park. I would like to pick some leaves or I would like to go to the zoo to see the animals because I wanna know a little bit more about the animals. Okay, and then the last part is, like I said, encourage your child to be resilient, explore their interests. This is a good time for them to learn to make mistakes as well as to learn from the mistakes. Okay, there is this parental support guide that was previously attached in the letter issued to the parents. You will find that there's a lot of online information about how to help your child in terms of online learning, how to structure the time management for them, what are the dangers or risks to watch out for, to protect your child online as well in terms of cyber-borness and cybersecurity. Okay, so I'll stop here. Are there any questions that you would like to ask? Can you please type in the chat? Q and A, yes, Q and A chat. Sorry, what's the question? Okay, they already get up in the chat. Oh. Okay, yeah, addressing. So parents, any questions? Wow, there's so many different learning platforms, yeah, SLS, Google Classroom, CSO, etc. It is very tedious. Wow, there's so many different learning platforms, yeah, SLS, Google Classroom, CSO, apps, etcetera, it is very tedious. Uh, parents, are there any other questions? You want me to ask? Okay, um I think I have a question here, this is how long does one child stay in the iPad class? Uh, does that mean that next year they will also be in the same iPad class? Um, okay, when it comes to iPad, iPad class, actually, I think with the technology nowadays, uh we are actually, I think, personal learning devices is actually very widely used uh across all the different classes now. Um, so. Would you?
Hi, I'm Minifizer here, they have a between before, I would like to answer this question. All right, uh currently, there is no iPad class or no iPad class. It means that all P three classes, most of the students are using devices. So all students are using devices such as iPad and also there are also devices like such an Android like tablet. So uh if the MP three, okay, normally they will uh be uh on block um um banded to the same class again in P four. So I hope that will be answer your questions because uh it's not the same like previous years whereby we have uh and a full iPad class and then a non uh iPad class. But currently, uh starting from last year, okay, we already have moved away from there. About all students, okay, uh have the opportunity to use devices in all the different classes. Yeah, we also have parents who actually, uh when they are in P three, the parents do not up uh for the charger device. However, when they are in P four, the parent changed their mind because they see the benefit in using the device. Yeah, so uh in the bending of the P three to P four is like they will mostly go to uh your on block from P three to P four, yeah? Thank you.
Okay, I have a parent who uh raised this question about uh five hours of work during the March holiday, that's not seem a lot. Um, thank you very much for your support, uh, okay. Uh, but given that some children are not at home during the school holidays, they are at childcare centers, caregiver's place uh with no access to the computer and internet while they are away from home during the day. Um, there isn't very much time left to do the LWT and uh there were, there's also a need to allocate family time to. Um, well, the thing is that for children who actually are away, uh most of the time during the day, you could actually try to work out a a plan, a mini plan for the child to say, okay, which are the particular tasks that are more manageable because not every pieces of what requires technology. Some are actually like business, uh for instance, social studies, they are required to do some kind of reading. Um, when it comes to um uh languages, they are also supposed to be doing a reading first or uh you know, read the book first before they actually respond and then they actually uh write the feedback. So perhaps the non uh technological based kind of uh work could be uh done during the daytime when they are away at the childcare center or when they are away at the caregiver's place. And then when it comes back uh at night, uh in the evening time and they have a little bit of time, they could actually do uh some of the work. Um, while yes, we would like the children to actually learn to use some form of technology, but if really time is um um really a very big constraint, your child is also uh encouraged to do the piece of writing on the piece of paper first and then possibly do a snapshot later on and then they can upload onto the platform for the T-shirt later. Uh, this is also acceptable. Uh, it doesn't mean that we want the very young children to tap up every single letters and then to form that words because uh we understand that this, it can also be time consuming. So uh we can do audio uh when a child is uh have the access to the computer or or time to use the computer or we can actually get the child to write down and then take a picture and upload for the T-shirt. Okay, um. See. Okay, is there another question? Wait, I'm trying to see. So, um, Mr. Li, I hope I've answered the question, like I say, I don't have to worry too much about the uh tech uh during the hours, this uh the daytime. Um, for parents, I think uh for parents who have uh very limited, as uh if your child has very limited access during the daytime for technology uh for learning personal learning devices because you do not allow your child to use iPad at home, etcetera. Uh, the school library is also opened and the school library has um iPads where the child could actually come to school to do their own recording to complete their LWT projects as well. So we do have the um support in school to help your child in terms of the uh technology, uh technology requirement. Ah, yes, uh, sorry, I have this query, I only let my boys use the Chromebook at home, uh does that suffice for the assignments? Uh, yes, it does. Uh, in fact, Chromebook uh is a very good learn, personal learning devices, the secondary schools also using Chromebooks. Um, it will allow your child to go into Chrome and then from there they could go into Coolbase, they could go into Classkick or even SLS as well as um uh Google Classroom. Yeah, so that, that is a, a good option. Uh, parents, are there any other questions that? Uh, uh, okay, they are not required to bring their learning devices to school, uh no. Um, but unless some of the teachers may require them to bring the learning devices to school, uh for instance, my class. Um, I asked some of the students who have their learning uh devices to uh to bring to school for, let's say, LWT uh preparation. So that you can see that they can actually log into the system, they actually get into the Classkick. Uh, they know how to assess the assignment, they know what to do. Uh, they know all the different function buttons. So if the T-shirt does have this requirement, um the T-shirt will communicate with the parents uh to uh let you know that, yes, your child will be encouraged to bring the personal learning devices to school. Uh, if not, then what we actually do in school is we will also um get the uh laptop, the Dell laptops for class use. So in other words, your, your child could also be using the school devices. Okay, uh I have a question that says, uh where the child actually lose out for not being, sorry, for not using for not, for not using the devices during lesson, I think. Okay. Okay, so uh if your child, no, no, uh that, like I say, if your child does not have the personal learning devices during the lessons time, uh the teachers do make the uh effort to actually um get the uh Chromebook cards. Uh, we have iPads for loan in school and we have the Dell laptops as well. So if we are going to conduct a lesson using uh PLDs, personal learning devices, we make sure that children have access to all this in the class. Okay, I have a question here, we would like to ask about on what basis would the school promote P four, where you based on exam grades or LWT assignments, where you be streaming this year as well?
Hi, I'm Minifizer here again, hi, about P four promotion, okay? Um, yes, you'll be using the weighted assessment, uh whatever assessments that you have. And for other pretty assessment, you only have math, uh which is graded, yeah? So uh it's actually um the collision of all the marks and then we'll be uh using it for the bending for next year, yeah? Uh, there'll be a subject-based bending um session for the P four parents. They will, we'll actually um expand further on this uh P four promotion. So uh parents do join us for the P four subject-based bending um engagement sessions in term two.
I think there is a question here about, uh, will any wifi be available for the children in school? Uh, yes, if your child is bringing their own PLDs to school, uh they can actually tap on the school wifi network. Uh, if not, like I said, they are always welcome to use the school systems as well as the school devices. So yes, there will be wifi available in schools. Okay, perhaps you can have one more question and then we will close the session. So are there any burning questions that parents would like to ask? Okay, uh the PLDs, when they are not in the classroom to answer this question, okay? Uh, where can my child store their PLD when they are not in the classroom? Uh, some of the teachers actually have the system whereby we actually lock the classroom and the classes go for their P lessons or the art lessons in the art room or science lesson. Um, and the science lab, okay? Um, if not, what we normally do is we get the students to put their PLDs in a tray and we lock it up in a metal cabinet during the CCA's time when they are not in the classroom. You're welcome. Okay, uh parents, if there are no other further questions, then uh thank you very much for your attendance in this session. Um, hope you will have an enjoyable time doing uh LWT with your child next uh next week during the March holiday. Thank you very much and um and happy holidays, thank you.